Good morning, everybody. It's the Dog with you on the 9th of January 2017. This winter is getting on my nerves, but it's supposed to be like 50 in a couple of days. Bring it on, baby. Couple of gentlemen are joining me this morning on the Weber Show. We've been waiting for their anticipation of having them on. The two newly elected town board members of Seneca Falls and you have to ask the question, why would they even want this job? Tom Razica, Lou Farrar Jr., my special guests this morning here on the Weber Show as we welcome you on a Monday morning. It's good to be with you. I hope you had a great weekend. And the weather's not too bad. I mean, compared to other areas in the country, it's not bad at all. And we got a couple, two, three, four inches of snow, a little cold, but again, it's supposed to be like 50 in a couple of days and then 48, then maybe back in the 20s. So without further ado, it's good to bring in my longtime friend Lou Farrar. Lou, good to have you here.
Thank you, Doug. It's nice to be here.
Myself and Lou, just so you know, we go back many decades together.
Don't say it.
Way a long time. And Tom Razica, Tom, thanks for coming in.
Good morning, Doug.
Good morning. First off, I gotta tell you a funny story about Lou and myself. We'll open up about the fact that we've done things with friends of ours similarly regarding these fights. And it brought back memories when the Rousey lady in the UCF just competed, well, we think she competed in Las Vegas about a week ago. And it was a much anticipated return to the ring for Rousey. And I think the cable companies, talk about thieves, I'm sorry, cable companies, they wanted $2,700 for bars. Really? Really? $2,700? It's based on occupancy? Are you serious? When was the day of, you know, getting it for like 60 or 70 bucks, you know? So anyways, the story I'm saying is that Rousey lasted all of 48 seconds. So can you imagine the people in Vegas watching there in the front row saying, boy, that was a great investment. Thanks for coming. But myself and Lou had the same experience years and years ago when Muhammad Ali and then, of course, Mike Tyson, we would gather a bunch of friends. We were making all of $6 a week and we would save up our money and go to Syracuse or go to the Strand Theater. Remember the Strand Theater? And we would sit there, get comfortable, get our popcorn, and all of a sudden the fights would be over in about 28 seconds. Remember those days, huh, Lou?
Money well spent, right?
Oh, yeah.
Go forward to the entertainment. It's done.
God, Ricky Scabonis, Katanas, some of my classmates of 63 were legendary. But we're here to talk about the town board. And first off, Tom, let Scott with you. You certainly are not in depth, I mean, as far as knowing what was going on, you certainly followed the town board proceedings. The Seneca Metals issue has been forefront, number one for, seems like forever to me. What made you come out of the woodwork and say, you know what? I want to be a member of that board. What prompted you to run?
Good idea. Good, good. Good question. Good question. Well, I'm thinking it needs a change, you know, and a new outlook. Something from the outside looking in, because I see a lot of infighting, a lot of infighting. It's either you're with the landfill or you're without the landfill, you know?
And certainly, it had to, it had to bring, you know, I appreciate the fact you did run and got elected. By the way, they obviously both got elected. Mary Ceratori and Annette Lutz were the previous holders of those seats. Certainly, Tom, it's no doubt that, in my view, we'll get to this during the show, while Seneca Metals is a key issue, and now Local Law 3 has been passed, there's other issues very important to the town. And that's something that you and Lou are going to talk about this morning. We need to focus on Seneca Metals, but we can't get carried away and spend 100% of our time on Seneca Metals as well. You would agree with that, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
And Lou, sitting back, having known you and your wife and your family for many, many years, what prompted you to come off the couch when you get some free time home, watching with your grandkids, et cetera, to come out and do this? Same scenario there? Just a lot of infighting going on?
Pretty much my involvement with Habitat.
Sure.
I was on, we were doing a project on Miller Street, and we still are. And what piqued my attention was the fact that residents of Miller Street, there's a four-inch water hose, fire hose hooked up to a hydrant that had been running all summer long from, let's see, it'd be the north side of Miller, probably 100, 150 feet down the street into a catch basin. And these people would have to come home from work at night and drive over a four-inch hose to get into their driveway.
Wow.
And that bothered me. I didn't understand what was going on. The more I started looking into it, it's infrastructure issues on that side of town that have been lacking for the longest time. So when people would be a little bit upset about having to come home that way all night, every day, all night, they would switch the position of the hose to head west on the other end. And this was the majority of the summer. And I kept wondering what can be done about this. Well, we have infrastructure issues that need to be addressed. The next one was when I see Falls Street.
Right.
Water bubbling up through Falls Street. Major leak there.
Right, I saw that, yeah. I was part of it. I was driving down there.
You start asking yourself.
Right, what's going on?
I watched the shows. I love Finger Lakes One, the news. I mean, Jim does a good job. His, do you, Josh, all the boys, Jessica. What I, what was lacking is there was no comments or talk about, well, how they're going to address it. What's going on? Why do I see this and nobody's talking about it? And then, you know, you just kind of start watching a little bit, and the meetings have been monopolized with a topic.
Number one topic.
That is near and dear to some people, but not all people.
Right.
What brings people to the table are different issues. What brought me to the table was a lot different than Local Law 3. And I want to work on doing what brought me to the table, which is infrastructure.
That's right. Yeah, a lot of things going on. And, you know, by the way, we should send kudos to Lou, and he's a humble guy. He doesn't like take a lot of credit, but the Habitat for Humanity and the building of the homes for people that need, you certainly are the face of that. I know you have a lot of people that assist you in building these homes, Lou, but.
Yes, sir.
How many homes have you been involved in?
Oh, God.
Can you recall, as far as a number? I know it's a lot.
Maybe 15.
I was gonna say, yeah. And that's pretty incredible. You've got a lot of people working and helping out, and even if they can't pound a nail straight, they come out and at least attempt to work it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It's a very, very humbling endeavor. It really is. I mean, when you learn the particulars, it's not somebody being given a house. They have to put in X number of hours to be eligible for the house.
Right.
They have to pay their way, like you and Mary, Jim and his wife, Tom and his wife. They pay all the taxes.
Right.
Everything that goes along with being a homeowner. It's a start. It's a good start for them.
Well, let's zero in on, let's, we're zeroing in on Seneca Metals and get your opinions on what transpired. As we all know, the election was held. A lot of speculation about shutting Seneca Metals downtown this year. Local Law 7, then we heard on the Local Law 3. You guys ran, you were victorious in the election. You both won, obviously. However, the end of the year came, or close to the end of the year, there was speculation that maybe a vote would take place on Local Law 3. Was your feeling any different, or is it feeling today, were you surprised that Annette Lutz and Mary Ceratori, with no hard feelings against either one of them, that they took it upon themselves to get that vote in prior to the end of the year before you and Lou came on the board? Was that an issue in your mind? Did you think they should have waited and let you and Lou decide based on, you know, since you were elected correctly by the, not correctly, but by the voters? Did you have an issue with that at all, or did you think that was part of the process?
It was a part of the process. They had, they had their issues with that. They wanted to push that through.
Okay.
That's what they started off to do. And they wanted to accomplish it and finish it before they left office.
Okay. And Lou, as far as your concern, what was your feeling regarding that? Same feeling, or did you have some apprehension about the fact that it was pushed through at the end of the year?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I felt that way.
Okay.
They were appointed, and that's fine. They started with Local Law 7.
Right.
They switched back to Local Law 3. They did amend some of it, take a little bit out, and they still went forward with it. I mean, I didn't want Local 7 or 3 part of my campaign.
Exactly.
And I kept it that way.
Right.
What I wanted was, like I said earlier, I wanted to address my infrastructure issues.
Right.
And I kind of had to wear that hat. They put that hat on me.
Right.
Well, the once people started assuming that that was mine, then it was mine. So that being said, if you feel as though that's mine, then maybe you should wait until the election and see what the people say.
Right.
And at that time, the people spoke.
Well, you know, being a citizen of this area, and as you know, for many, many years, we've lived in Seneca Falls for a long, long time. We moved to Geneva after we got married. We celebrated 50 years of marriage last May. And our first five years was in Geneva, and basically from that point on, and I think it was 1971, we came to Seneca Falls, had a home over on Green Street, as you know, across from Gino Frappoli.
That was my home, Seth.
There you go. And then we decided to move to the school building, which has been our residence for some 24 years behind the library. I guess where I'm coming from, and watching Channel 12's presentation, I must say, I give credit to the audio and visual people of the town board. Finally, they got some equipment where you can hear the speakers and see the people. It got a little testy, and maybe to my point of view, out of control, Tom, relative to the redundancy of the slashing and the criticizing of the Lazeros of the world and the people that were opposed to passing the law. I think it got out, and I think you had, Lou, I think, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think you got into a little bit of a valley brook with some people in the crowd one night relative to thinking that you were bought out by Seneca Metals. And I think that, I don't think there's any place for that. I think it's just over the top, and I think our citizens' reas, I understand and I respect everybody's opinion. I respect the people that want Seneca Metals to be shut down today at 5:00. Okay, I get that. People have a right to speak out. It's America. I don't have a problem with that. But when you bring it to the board meeting, you become over zealous in your opinions, and you continue to hammer the same topics over and over. I don't think it brings our town any justice. Lou, what do you think?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
It's gotta just be a more demeanor.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think to occupy a board meeting with a specific issue that isn't relevant to the majority of the people in this town is monopolizing that meeting. And I don't believe, I know for a fact, it's not productive. There's no place for name-calling.
Right.
There's calling, there's just none of that. There's no place of it. We should be conducting business, looking at our infrastructure issues, talking about how, how much we can develop this town. Let's move forward. Let's bring business in.
Yeah, I agree.
A $500 million investment, five miles up the road. How can we expand on that?
Mm-hmm.
What can we do to say, hey, we got a nice city right here, small town.
Right.
Right here, five miles down the road. What can we bring in?
And Tom.
We're not showing a good message.
No, I agree.
This has occupied our meetings.
And Tom, I agree, you agree with that as well?
Absolutely.
The temperament of the meetings, just to me.
When is a meeting a meeting and not a mob?
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, and I'm not here, even though it's my show, and what I say here is not endorsed by Jim Sannicropi by any stretch of the imagination. He's not that stupid to endorse anything I say most of the time. The point is, my view is simple. I'm going to be 72, God willing, April 29th. My view is, you know, we can disagree. Have at it. You know, let's disagree, but let's not continue to hammer the same topics, the same people getting up during the meetings to grab the microphone and just beat up on the same topic and the same wording every single time. And now I understand, you know, and I'm going to bring this up. I think now we've got Doug Avery, who I respect, I like Doug. Now we have yet another committee. I think they're calling this out as the Environmental Committee. And what is their role? To watch what Lou and Tom and the rest of the board is going to be doing? To watch what Seneca Metals does day in and day out? To me, I don't know if we need yet more committees, just my personal view, you know?
Committees are good.
Yeah.
You know, have your committee.
Right.
We were invited to a meeting.
Right.
I don't know if it's going to be a doable meeting for me and Tom. That's pretty much what I've seen. It's pretty much what's been said right along.
Yeah.
Nothing's different.
But what's their role going to be? They're going to be watching what the board does and what Seneca Metals?
They want to try, I believe, you know, from what I read.
They want to be watchdogs. Absolutely.
Watchdogs.
Right. Everybody's got an opinion. We work on facts, you know?
Well, I just think that, to me, it's a bit misplaced in just a personal view. I don't know if we need yet another committee. And by the way, Greg Lazero stated in the paper yesterday, if you missed it, that they have no role as far as town government goes. So we have a committee overseeing or looking at what the board does day in and day out, meeting in, meeting out. I'm not so sure that's the answer.
And of course, the landfill.
Yeah, and of course, watching the landfill. And I don't know, that's just something that doesn't rhyme too well with me personally. And I'm only speaking as a citizen, even though I'm not a homeowner, I'm a renter. I also think it's not a good thing. That's just my personal view, but we'll see how it all goes. But I think the key is between Tom and myself, along with Lou, we would ask that the temperament of the town and the citizenry, go to the meetings and make it productive, not just a bitch session, you know?
And if I could add to that, I personally feel Greg's done an awesome job.
Yeah, I have too.
I, again, the process is, he ran for a position, he was elected to the position. To get up there every month and recommend that he step down and send them constant emails.
It's ridiculous.
It's the process.
Yeah.
If you want to change the process, then by all means, come out, run for these seats and change. Put your platform out there. Let people see what your issues are, what the planks are in your platform. Run for it and change it.
I agree.
That's the process.
Great, Tom?
I agree with that.
That's what got Tom and I involved, and I'm sure that's what brought Greg and the rest of the members of the board to the table. To stand up and request our resignations, or Greg's constantly, it's not going to happen.
I know. This is Weber This Week. Our friends Lou Farrar Jr., along with my friend Tom Razica, joining us this morning on a special show. And by the way, speaking of that $450, $500 million Delago Resort and Casino, 23 days from today will be the grand opening. By the way, just so you get an update, a grand opening obviously is Wednesday, February the 1st. They're going to have a cutting of the ribbon, they're going to have a press conference, and then they're going to open up the doors. They originally could open up the doors at 10:00 a.m. I understand it's pushed back to 10:30 now, where the general public will be allowed to join and be a part of that casino. And it's supposed to be absolutely spectacular, from what I'm hearing. They've, they put a couple pictures on Facebook of the floor, and it's going to be.
I saw that.
It's going to be absolutely gorgeous. So I wish you a lot of luck when you get up there. If you see me, probably be at the A-10 machine, probably taking $20 out to play the slots. Hey, we're going to take our commercial break, roll off the great sponsors that make this show possible. When we come back, we'll talk a little bit about football.
Keighley National Bank. Visit Bill Ryan and his team for all of your banking needs. Offices in Union Springs and Aurora, a fine sponsor of this show for over 30 years. DA Liquor on Broad Street in Seneca Falls. Amy Padula and her team will find the right spirit for you every time. When you stop in, tell Amy the Dog sent you. Steve Waddams and Waddams Enterprises, your local employer of choice. Proud supporter of Weber This Week and local athletics. Fill out an application at waddams.com. The Gould Hotel welcomes you to come out and enjoy the revitalization of this historic downtown Seneca Falls landmark. Every Wednesday is ladies' night with special-priced drinks and half-priced appetizers. Learn more at the gouldhotel.com. The Omen Theater on Williams Street in Lyons. See what's playing this week at omenttheater.com. Located off New York State Thruway, exit 41, The McGee Diner has earned their reputation as a popular family restaurant, serving country fresh, home-cooked meals daily. Stop in for breakfast, lunch, or dinner, and check out their menu at mcgeediner.com. Delago Resort and Casino will feature a luxurious 205-room hotel, several restaurants ranging from casual to fine dining, and a 2,500-capacity entertainment venue called The Vine. The casino will have 2,000 slot machines, 75 table games, and 10 poker tables. Visit www.delagoreso.com. Seneca Metals is an award-winning company that has earned a reputation of going above and beyond to protect the environment and support their community. As an EPA inspector once said, "Their operation is head and shoulders above the rest." The Seneca Falls Country Club, awesome 18-hole layout, open to the public, and a 12-month payment plan for members. Check out senicafallscountryclub.com. And the Newark Pilots of the Perfect Game Collegiate Baseball League, a minor league team with a major league ballpark. Season ticket packages available at norcPilots.com. And the Wilson Press in Seneca Falls. My good pal Rich Ricky and his team can handle all of your printing and mailing needs. Visit them online at wpress.com. Rich Ricky and Wilson Press, a fine sponsor of Weber This Week.
Hey, welcome back, everybody. It's the Dog with you on a little frozen Monday morning. Good to be with you. Tom Razica, along with Lou Farrar Jr., the newly-elected town board members of Seneca Falls. And why in God's sakes, they would try to get those seats is beyond my belief, but they're here and they're, they're going to do the best they can. I guess when they had free time at night, they decided to spend it hours and hours in the town board meeting. Listen, before we get, yeah, I know. That's right. Before we get back to the gentleman, I want to run a couple of sports notes, but a lot of things happening in the world of sports, obviously. NFL, of course, leading up to the Super Bowl. Tonight, of course, the college championship will be played, the culmination of the college football season, so repeat of last year, Alabama versus Clemson. By the way, if you are, want to bet your friend, Alabama's a six-and-a-half-point favorite tonight against Clemson, according to Las Vegas. Who else did dispute, except for Las Vegas, who sets the odds? So Alabama favored. By the way, if Alabama wins tonight, I was watching Mike and Mike this morning before I came here, if Alabama wins tonight, they will have achieved, Jimmy, a 15-0 record. You know the last time that happened? Somebody, a college football team being 15-0? Are you ready? You go back to 1897, University of Pennsylvania. 1897, that's the last time a college football team went 15-0. That's a, that's a course of Alabama wins tonight. So it'll be interesting to see. ESPN will have it, starting at 8:00 tonight. By the way, the NFL playoffs, all the favorites won. Speaking of Las Vegas, if you bet money on all the favorites this week, Seattle, Pittsburgh, Houston, and Green Bay, you would have won a four-teamer, a lot of cash, just so you know that. By the way, upcoming this weekend, a lot of games to play as the continuation of exciting games leading up to the Super Bowl. 4:30 on Saturday, this coming Saturday, Seattle will be taking on Atlanta. In Atlanta, Atlanta is a four-point favorite. That's a 4:35 start. That's on Fox at 8:15. Houston with no chance taking on Tom Brady and New England. New England, are you ready? A 16-point favorite. 16! So that tells you what Vegas thinks about Houston's chances. On Sunday at 1:00, Pittsburgh, this ought to be a great game. Pittsburgh going to Kansas City, that crazy crowd out in Kansas City. NBC will have it. That's a 1:00 game. That game is even. And at 4:40, this game, I'm looking forward to, the Green Bay Packers, who are playing exceptional football, will travel and take on, yes, America's team, the Dallas Cowboys. I was surprised at this line, Dallas favored by four points. And Jimmy, your embattled SU basketball team, I took them to Omridge and took them over the Coles. A couple weeks ago on my Facebook page saying, Jimmy's got to step down, bringing Hopkins, bringing anybody, bringing you, the coach, bringing somebody to switch it out out there after getting crushed by Boston College. But as you pointed out last night on your podcast, which I enjoy watching, they have turned it around with impressive wins at home against Miami and Pittsburgh, and they're rolling again.
Yeah, you never know what's going to happen with Syracuse, but one thing you can be sure of is that we thought they were so deep. And now Jim Bayheim plays five and a half guys.
Yeah, I know. I know.
So, but whatever works. I like, I like seeing five guys with them winning by 20 rather than losing by 30, so.
That's right. Hey, by the way, high school basketball, covered by Generations Bank and a host of great sponsors to make our coverage of high school basketball. I took this year off and decided to take a break because I've been doing it for so many years. I'm, I'm on the call if they need an emergency. But anyways, tonight, Jim Sannicropi will be working the game tonight. They'll be at the Atwood in Lyons. That's Lyons, or excuse me, Lyons hosting Bloomfield. That game will be broadcast tonight on fingerlakesone.com and many other mechanisms. Tomorrow night, Naples will travel and take on Marcus Whitman. Brendan Harrington with a call. And then on Thursday night, a game that I might get out and check out, Newark comes into town, or excuse me, Miners goes to Newark. That's on Thursday night. Jim Sannicropi with the play-by-play. Jim, that Miners-Norfolk game ought to be a beauty.
That's the game of the year.
I was going to say.
And it's been a pretty big game the past two years. Miners gone in and got, really got their butt kicked.
I saw that, yeah.
But, you know, Miners 11-0 this year. Newark was one eight straight after losing their first three.
Exactly.
It's going to be a good one.
And by the way, I need to send out a shout-out to a friend of mine. We were at a party, my daughter had a wildcard party on Saturday up in Geneva. And Lou and Tom, it's funny, friends of mine up there, Sam Cosentino and his wife Kathy, they're nice people. And Sammy Cosentino was a diehard Clemson fan, as much as Jim Spina is.
Really?
You know, Jimmy Spina is a diehard Clemson fan, and Sam Cosentino is a diehard Clemson fan. And it was funny, as Sam approached his wife, and I was on a couch with friends of mine, and he said, I can't believe it. He's looking at his wife's fingers. And Jim, and Sam said, do you know that the color of your nails are the Arkansas, I mean, the Alabama colors? They were the Alabama Crimson Tide. And it was almost funny. I bring that up because it was hilarious. I wonder if she's gotten her nails cleaned before tonight? Because that would be a tough household with her husband pulling for Clemson and the wife walking through the kitchen with the Alabama colors on her nails. So Kathy, if you're checking out the Dog Show this morning, I hope you got some nail cleaner this morning.
Let me switch this around a little bit, Harold. Let me ask you something.
Sure.
How long have you been a fixture in the radio business on Falls Street?
Oh, God. Started in 1970.
Started, that's what I.
1970, when WSFW was created.
WSFW, absolutely.
I applied for the job audition and got it. And I did it until about 2000, when George sold the station.
Yep.
Unbeknownst to anybody, that he was going to sell it.
Yeah.
And I took a couple of years off, and then I went to work up in Geneva, radio operation. I did a show, an hour's talk show every weekend. And I didn't get excited about that. I used to like doing the 7:30, 8:00 morning shows I did for years. And I decided to get out of that, and I went into retirement again from the broadcast side of it. And then I met Jim Sannicropi at Parker's, and of course, Jim and me go back a long time. He's good friends with my daughter, Sam, and said, why don't you come to work at Finger Lakes One and.
Well, I heard the negotiations were a little more tougher than that.
Oh, they were quite tough. We decided, he's going to pay me a dozen wings.
Yeah.
And mozzarella sticks if I do a good job.
Actually, I heard it was a box seat at Syracuse and a few other.
No, but.
On the other side of it, I mean, when, when you first contacted me way back when.
Oh, way back.
And I want to thank you for the prediction, by the way.
That's right.
You know, the election.
Thank you.
But when you had contacted me way back when about possibly being on the show.
Coming on the show.
I said, how come we turned down Harold?
You can't.
Harold has been doing this forever.
Forever. That's right.
And you do a great job.
Well, thank you.
And you're a valuable service to this town and community.
Well, thanks. I've enjoyed it.
You really are.
I've enjoyed it. I just completed five years with Finger Lakes One.
Great.
Five years.
And when you need your contract negotiated.
I'll have you talk to Jim.
Call me in, and I will help you.
All right, good. All right. I remember that.
Yeah.
Give me your cell number before you leave.
There you go.
And listen, by the way, we got a few more minutes. I want to get to Tom. Tom, as you look forward to what you're going to be doing on the board and working with Lou and Greg and Delalas and Vic Peretta, other issues that are concerning you, as far as, Lou talked about infrastructure, you know, is that the key, bringing businesses back to Seneca Falls?
Absolutely.
Trying to get some extra revenues flowing in this?
Absolutely. Absolutely. That's a main concern right there.
Okay.
We got to get the businesses back in here. And it's not a deterrent that Seneca Metals is here. Everybody says Seneca Metal, people are going to come here because Seneca Metals smells, okay?
Right.
It's not that. Delago came here.
Right.
You know, it's not a deterrent.
Right.
Let's move on.
That's right. And Lou, I remember the days when talking back in the 60s and 70s, Seneca Clothing, Shannon's, Seo and Rutz, tons of, tons of businesses.
Yes.
Pharmacy across the street.
Two of them.
Yeah. Lots of things going on.
Yes. Three shoe stores.
It's not the landscape anymore.
No, it's not. I believe that that might be the way of the future. I think we have to look at more specialized stores for downtown. I mean, you've got people like Amazon and sure, businesses like that, that are really changing the, the vision of shopping the way it was. But I do believe there's still places for small-town America to.
Yeah.
To find a particular niche in a town like this and to really do good with it.
Well, you know, as we approach the 10:00 hour, Tom, if you were to speak to the viewers that show, to check out this show every Monday, and then we click on later tonight, what's your message to the public? To come with positive ideas and let's not.
Positive ideas.
Let's not complain about things that are past.
Absolutely. Let's not, let's, let's pull together. We've got a nice community here. Let's go, let's all join together and.
Yeah.
Make it good.
We don't want the cowboy Indian syndrome.
Oh, no, we don't want that.
We want people to work together, right, Lou?
Absolutely.
And if we work together, we can make this a stronger town of Seneca Falls. We can all survive. We can all prosper. And if we, if we break into splinters, like I see happening, and I hope it stops, and again, back on the meeting, please come to the meeting. I know